I now call the Des Moines City Council meeting for June 27th, 22nd to order. And with that, I will have Councilmember Nottingham lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those that didn't understand the reference to the sunglasses, we are honoring the birthday of the first appearance of the Men in Black. Let the roll reflect that all seven councilmembers are present. Before we begin the meeting, council, I have a few couple of statements. First one is concerning the Water District 54. A very unfortunate incident occurred over the past weekend. On Sunday morning, June 18th, the city learned that contaminants had entered the King County Water District 54's water supply and a boil water notice had been directed by the King County Health Department. A Water District employee of this has notified the city's Public Works Director. This communication occurred mid-morning Sunday, June 18th. It appears the Water District was aware of potential contamination as early as Saturday, June 17th. Upon receiving notice, our Chief Administrative Officer, Bonnie Wilkins, immediately acted utilizing city communication channels, including social media, to alert our residents regarding the urgent matter, to ensure those citizens and the businesses within the Water District were notified. Those that signed up for Code Red, a system in place in King County to notify individuals of various emergencies, received communications at that time as well. It is important to understand that District 54 is an independent water district that serves the downtown Des Moines area along with North Hill and parts of Norney Park. This is one of three water districts within our city and none of which are under the authority of the city of Des Moines. We fully appreciate and acknowledge the efforts of Water District 54 to respond to this crisis. The city of Des Moines only wishes to assist the Water District in returning to its safe and effective delivery of clean water for our community. We also know that even amid this crisis, it is impossible, it is, it is possible to learn some useful lessons. Unfortunately, many of our residents were not signed up for King County Code Red and did not receive the notification until much later, either by others in the community, news agencies, the city's Facebook post. When we asked the Water District what type of help they needed, they responded if we, they responded if we could help them put the word out, which we immediately did. However, during the critical time, the city's council and city manager were never notified by District 54 of this serious event. The value of being informed early may have heightened our ability to help spread the word and reduce the risk of our community. In addition to the return of, of the safe delivery of water, we want to assure the, the ongoing integrity of the water and District 54's infrastructure. During Water District 54's Comprehensive Water System Plan Review of 2019, the city had serious concerns relating to the potential of such an event, water treatment processes, aged infrastructure, and the condition of the tower that's just down the way, and the condition of the piping. We have also concerns relating to plans to replace the infrastructure, the timeline, and the funding required accomplishing such, such a task. This is not, this is not the time to engage in these inquiries, but that will certainly be high on the list of next steps after the incident is resolved. All that matters is well described in a statement by Councilmember Pennington, a former Water District 54 Commissioner and current councilmember. In our discussion about this, Councilmember Pennington said, "In the end, safety of our citizens is the most important thing. We all want that, and I pledge, and I pledge to work in any way we can assist our city utility partners in assuring the safe, reliable, and effective delivery of water and utility services." These are the times when a situation, it may not be our fault, however, it is a time that it is also our responsibility and to do what is best. So therefore, moving forward, I propose the following, council. We make a request to District 54 to meet with our staff, with, to meet with our staff to include our emergency response and public works team and, and a council representative. Councilmember Pennington would be my choice due to his expertise in these areas, including emergency management. The purpose of this meeting would be to explore the issues this event exposed and how District 54 could leverage the city's assistance should future events occur. The second one, I request our city manager explore opportunities through grants or other programs to help compensate the severe losses some of our businesses incurred through this event. I make the request, and the third, I make the request that our city manager hire an independent consultant to review Water District 54's infrastructure, potential liabilities, and needed capital improvements. The city anticipates expanded growth in the business, in, in, in business development and residential density downtown, partly in response to the new requirements also that come from the state legislator. At this time, I'll be happy to hear other comments from other councilmembers. Councilmember Nottingham.
Thank you, Mayor. I've written some stuff down so I don't forget anything. It's not very long. I am disappointed in the way the situation has been handled. I want to apologize to the residents and to the businesses affected, and I support the actions proposed by the mayor.
Councilmember Harris.
If I heard correctly, I would support your proposals two and three, but not number one. I think we should certainly go ahead with some form of business grant program that should be easy enough to implement, and I would definitely like to get some numbers on what kinds of capital improvements are needed. But I guess I would wonder if, if just Water District 54 can't already provide some of that, are they incapable of, of giving us that kind of analysis or?
Well, request one is more of a, a meeting between their organization and our organization to talk about opportunities that we could do better should another occurrence happen.
Sure, I, I understand that. I'm just asking.
So I'm, I'm not following your question.
Well, my question, I believe regarding number two, I'm just, can the Water District speak for themselves as to what improvements they need before we take action?
So request two is for programs for grants for the businesses.
Okay.
Number three, they may do their own review, but, but I'm recommending we have an independent review from an outside entity that the city manager finds for us.
It, it seems to me like we should wait for them to, you know, give them an opportunity to speak on their own behalf before we.
So the only thing I would comment is, is that we did a lot of that and had those discussions on a 2019 Comprehensive Review Plan and called out our concerns and so forth. And I'm not, we didn't really get the answers. So I'm not that confident in that particular aspect. That's why it's included as the third requir, third request.
I, I guess my final thing is shouldn't, you know, if you want support for number one, shouldn't, shouldn't we talk to them and ask them, you know, okay, do you have that information? And then if they, if their answers are not, you know, satisfactory, then come back and do this investigation.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna move to councilmember's statements.
I think request number one is exactly that discussion. That's the whole point, and so we can get the information, what there is, from Water District 54. How else do you get it unless you have a designated person to have the conversation with them? And that's how I understood proposal number one. Proposal number two is to try to assist our businesses that have lost money, revenue, time, you know, trying to deal with not being able to function, and I think that's very well-founded. And then number three is to take a look at and to have some expertise that is independent in order to figure out, you know, are we getting the right information and are we getting solid information out of it? To me, that's a three-step process that is appropriate to have, and I, I would endorse this proposal.
Deputy Mayor Buckston.
Agreed in regard to, especially in regard to item number one, I think that every time there is an incident that affects a major part of our population, whether it's the Water District, PSE, Comcast, depending, I mean, that there should be a clause in our franchise agreements that require a, a debriefing and how can we do better? So this, I think, item number one is a request for a debrief, which I think should be SOP for every single one of the utilities. If something happens when Midway has a major spill of a million gallons into the sound, I think it should be required in our franchise agreement that they sit down, that there's a debrief. And, and depending on the impact, we should stand up the EOC. So I don't know if that should be a different request down under, to, under new business to remand the discussion to a committee to review our franchise agreements, because I think every time there's an emergency, there should be a debrief.
I would, I would say that, I think that's something that's a possibility down the road. I think these first three initiatives are the priority, and that could be one of the outcomes of some of our findings.
Okay, so based on that though, because of my strong opinion on that, I'm definitely in favor of number one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Oxger.
Okay, I can understand one and two, but aren't we, if we're, if we're asking to hear from the Water District, aren't we kind of jumping the gun to go right away and, and ask for an independent review, given that we haven't even heard what information they've got to offer? The second thing is that there was information that went out on, I believe, Facebook, but I've seen nothing on the website. And also, you know, there's a concern that, that both Water, both Highland Water District and Lake Haven have posted on their websites that, you know, the portions of Des Moines that are, that are affected are not in their districts. And the businesses that are affected, you know, their business along the highway that had, that are basically, you know, caught in the whole idea of, you know, the boil water situation downtown. And I think we probably could have done a little bit better as far as, you know, explaining exactly what areas were involved and what areas were still open for business.
I will tell you this, that even today, there were attempts made to contact Water District 54 to find out the status, find out things, and we have not had any recalls returned. The 2019 report also erodes my confidence that, that they may be capable, that I think we as, as councilmembers owe an obligation to the residents of the city, one to take care of the immediate, immediate problem and find out how we can do better in the future, but we also need to protect, ensure that the water quality stays at a level that's acceptable. And quite honestly, one of the known facts that I'm aware of is that they are not ready for the future development downtown. And that was called out in the 2019 report, as I mentioned earlier. So it's time, and I'll, I'll, I'll say that per, sir, I'll, I'll call you in a second. The, the fact is, is that they, I'm not sure are capable, and we need to look at it. We need to look at it for our citizens, and that is the priority. As I, as it was mentioned earlier, it comes down to what's best for the safety of our citizens and the future of our city. It's, it, it's, it's come to that. You may think differently, and, and that would be where we contrast. So you have the floor, sir.
I'm, I'm not questioning the, whether or not, you know, we need to be looking out for the safety of our citizens or anything else, but you're talking about a discussion that was four years ago. Have we had discussions with them since to know if they've done anything in order to improve in the four-year time period? Or are we just damning them on, on information that was, you know, four years ago? I don't know that there's been, you know, any further contact with the city about this.
All right, Councilmember Harris, and I'll go to you, Deputy Mayor Buckston.
I would just say that this is premature, okay? They're up to their neck and they're waiting for the test results, and just give them a chance to get past this, okay? And then you, it sounds to me like an administrative, you know, city to Water District Management discussion, and if that's not fruitful, okay, then let's take a look at it. But basically trying to just give this a week or two for them to get, you know, off the log roll. The lesson that we can take away from this is one of communication. It's the same thing, this is just from 10 years ago. We could and should investigate how to reach every resident within just a couple of hours. That's our, that, to my mind, is our primary duty. They're gonna take care of the water, and then the cap stuff, you know, that'll happen over periods of months. But right now, the lesson we should take away is how do we reach people for any emergency? Because we got five of these SPDs and the beaches and all this other stuff. And it, this happens with surprising frequency, and each time, people don't find out about it for like hours, days, and yeah, that is just the obvious thing to me that should be part of this discussion right now, so.
Deputy Mayor Buckston.
Thank you, Mayor. So in regard to that, that is just frankly, I mean, these are interviews with Consoar, our Communications Consultant, that was one of the things that I asked about. So I'm hoping that when they come back, that that is, that investigation is on their work plan or on their scope of work for us to, in what is industry standard, what are other cities using, what products are out there to enable us to do that kind of, not just disseminate information, but gather information? So in my mind, for now, I feel like the request is in process, and if they, if that does not come back on the work plan, then I feel like it would be a good time to bring it up again. Okay, so in regard to that. In regard to number three, I feel like moving forward in this situation with the Water District or any other utility, success is going to be a long time away. It's gonna be months if, if there's a, something that will happen. So I feel like deciding right now to hire, hire a consultant to review whether, if we just wait a few more weeks, I don't think it's gonna make the big picture different. So I feel like if we let number three go for now and make it part of the summary statement of number one, whoever we assign as the council representative, if it's councilmember Pennington, that this item, number three, is on his, that, that is like the summary statement of the meeting. What, what's the recommendation here? Do we hire a consultant or not that, that are between our staff and that council representative? They're gonna come back and give us a report of that debrief meeting, and then I think that would be a, a good time to make that decision.
City Manager Mathias.
Just two points. It's, it's ironic, especially in an emergency, to recall that the only two votes against Consoar were Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Oxger, who are now claiming the values of communications. And the second thing I'll tell you is that this afternoon at 1:30, Bonnie Wilkins, our Chief Administrative Officer, called over to the Water District to once again ask them what they needed from us. She was told that Yoshiko would call her back in half an hour. She has yet to receive a call back.
If I may. Nope, I have Councilmember Pennington, then I have Councilmember Oxger, and then I have you, Councilmember Harris.
Go ahead and let these guys speak, and I'll, I'll wrap up.
All right, Councilmember Oxger, you're first.
I objected to the mischaracterization of why I voted against the appointment of Consoar. It had to do, not over the, the hiring of a consultant, it had to do with whether or not a, there was going to be a, an investigation of, from vendors as to what products were out there. I have been quite adamant that we have a communications problem and it needs to be fixed, so I objected to the mischaracterization of my vote.
All right, Councilmember Harris.
I would move that we vote on item number two, which I believe is the only thing that all seven of us agree on heartily.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll, we'll vote on item two first, and then we'll, Councilmember Pennington, I'll come to you for comments. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's fine. Would you repeat what?
So item two is I request the city manager explore opportunities through grants or other programs to help compensate the severe losses of some of our businesses incurred through grants or other programs. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That passes unanimously. All right, Councilmember Pennington.
Okay, first off, I want to say that all of you made really good points, and I don't necessarily disagree with any of them. Second off, just for those that don't know my background, I've been in emergency, I've been in the fire service for 47 years, and over half of that year, I was responsible for emergency management. In 2013, September 2013, at that time, I was a commissioner for Water District 54 when they had their first event like that, at least first in my, my time. And I took a week off work and managed the incident for them. And so I know exactly what's going on over there, and I know the, the complications that they've had. I've know what, what their daily routines are. I know the contacts with the Health Department. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. I was fortunate that I had resources that I could call on, and that was helpful with the success of, of that particular incident. The, this incident, you know, again, there's a lot of opinions, a lot of posturing, a lot of. lot of political and, and, and personal, personalities and, and political things, most of which I really don't care too much about when it comes to taking care of our citizens and their And relative to representing the council, if that's what the council desires, I will do that. And what needs to come out of that is we need to take a look, we need to do a post-incident analysis, need to look at the response. We need to look at what worked and what didn't work. What, what could we do better out of that? You do that every time, because if you don't, you're destined to set your up, set yourself up for failure again. So we'll do that. And, and that review and those questions and, and the folks, if, if I'm the one that will, will help do that, I, I won't lead the review. I'll ask someone to come in and do it. Because there needs to be somebody who isn't connected with either party to do that, so we can get a good objective review. And then out of that comes your best practices. What can we do for the future? Now, some of those things are not going to be comfortable for the, the city or the Water District. And that's okay. Some of those things that get called out, I'm sure, and I, I know, I won't comment on what I've observed, because this isn't the place to do that. But what I will say is, at the end of the day, when this is all done, when we're, we look at all of the different things that have to happen, and what happened and what didn't happen, at the end of the day, what it's about is making sure that our citizens, regardless of where the incident occurs in Des Moines, regardless of what other entities are engaged and involved, at the end of the day, it's about our, our citizens, their well-being, their safety, and in this case, our businesses. That's what we have to look at. And I will tell you, I don't care about the, the politics behind it, and I don't care about the personalities behind it. I care about the end is what's best for you folks sitting out there. That's the bottom line for me. So if you want me to do that, I'll be glad to. But understand that my lens is one of 47 years of emergency response and taking care of people and managing incidents. And I have managed incidents that have gone well, and I have managed incidents that have not. I've been involved in incidents where lives have been saved, and I've been involved where they haven't. And those are things that I have to wake up every morning and look at the mirror and live with. So again, if you want me to do this, I'll be glad to do it. But just understand where my perspective comes from. Thank you.
Understood. And the idea is to get the two, two entities talking and however that's facilitated. So do I have a motion for proposal one to make the efforts to arrange a meeting, obviously after this event is over, just to review and see the opportunities?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Buxton and a second. I've got, well, I'll take Councilmember Nutting on this one. I think we've discussed this. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Before you take the vote, since it involves me and, and something that, that I will be involved in, I, I won't, I will.
You'll recuse yourself? Okay, fair enough. All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxiger, and myself, all those opposed, Councilmember Harris. Then that one goes 5-1. All right. Do I have a motion for the third proposal, or do we wait?
Question.
Yeah.
Did number one include the assignment of Councilmember Pennington without being a different decision?
No, that, it's, it's one in the same as the way it was always.
Okay, for sure. All right.
It's, I, his qualifications, as he just demonstrated, I think is the best representative from the council to be forward. I think nobody would dispute that. And that was assumed. All right. Councilmember Nutting?
I make the motion.
Okay. So the next one is, and, and I'll second it. So the, so the thing is, is that, that, the, the, right here, the issue is, do we go ahead and direct the city manager to hire an independent consultant to evaluate the Water District's capabilities? Just, okay, and I have Councilmember Oxiger, I have a, I have a first and a second. I have Councilmember Oxiger, Deputy Mayor Buxton, and then Councilmember Pennington. Go ahead, sir.
Again, I, okay. I think this is premature. We need to talk to the Water District first and figure out, the, the information we're going on is four years old by your calculation. So let's talk to them and find out if it's necessary for us to go to the expense of going out and, and coming up with, you know, a different set of, of data. Let's talk to them. It's, it's their district.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I agree. I think this should be an item of discussion at that table, at the table from item number one.
I have Councilmember Pennington, then I'll go to you, Councilmember Harris.
So is, I guess I have a question. Is the intent behind this for, for that consultant to be hired and work right away? Or is the intent for that to be an authorization if the committee comes back and says, we would, we need to have a, a third-party review?
I'm going to defer that. What would you leave the vision, city manager?
Well, I think it's, I think this is very difficult, you know? And I think the constant reference, we need to talk to them. As I said, it's been very difficult to receive communication in the midst of this particular crisis. Maybe that's understandable, because there's not a lot of staff over there, whatever. But we, we stand ready to assist in any manner that we can. I think that the possibility, for example, of, of standing up the Emergency Operations Center is perhaps an appropriate action, but that would need the participation and support of the Water District in that process, since we cannot dictate to them what they need to do. And hopefully, as a Water District skilled in this, they do know. So I think the issue is that in 2019, we identified certain concerns the city had about the capitalization, the infrastructure, and the functioning of the Water District. And, and those were, as Councilmember Pennington referenced, let's say, not received warmly. And so if we were to look at what's the status of the Water District now, I think that that scope of what that would look like, first, I think Councilmember Pennington, in all likelihood, the first part of a meeting with the Water District, as you voted for motion number one, would be an after-event review. And from that, what lessons could be learned? And from determining what lessons could be learned, I think that would determine the scope of what we need to look for. Because what we need in this community is our utility districts that can provide to the current level of demand in a successful and healthy manner and to the future level of demand. We had a discussion here tonight, our comprehensive plan update is taking place. And that comprehensive plan update, based on jurisdictional requirements from other entities like the state legislature and King County and PSRC, is to add 3,800 residential units and over 2,000 jobs. So that's, that implies a significant amount of growth. And we have to assure, I think, that the constraint on that growth is not the ability of utility districts to provide their, their required services. And that's across the board. That's not just District 54. So I would assume that, that the best way to approach it would be have that first meeting, and then for Councilmember Pennington and others who are involved to try and rationalize what is the scope and what should this look like? And is there a role for the city or not? And I think that's what we're concerned about.
So if you were, if we were to approve this, this evening, then it would be a, after this committee is met, and we say, we believe collectively, not one-sided, but collectively, that we should have a, a comprehensive review of the water system and, and learn where our weaknesses and strengths are within the system and, and what it can, can support. If what I'm, what I'm hearing is correct, is, so you're not going to hire someone right now, but you're going to wait, but you would already have the pre-authorization to do that if the committee comes back and recommends that? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's my understanding. And I think one element of this review, without question, would be the degree of capitalization available to the district to fulfill infrastructure requirements, in addition to anything else that comes out of that discussion. And ideally, based on your earlier comments, Councilmember, we could work cooperatively and collaborate on outcomes that are good for everyone in the city. That would be the goal.
So it, it would be, my thought, that if we had this pre-authorization, and, and again, it's a, it's a, it's a collective, it's a collaborative discussion with the Water District, and that's the desire, that we have the, the ability to work with them to have their system evaluated, and, and it's on the city's dime. So to have that pre-authorization, so that when, when that recommendation is made, we were able to cut back on our, on our bureaucratic oversight on, on things that don't need to be there. So I, I would support this motion.
Councilmember Harris.
I voted against item number one for the same reason I'm going to vote against item number three. Frankly, this strikes me as insensitive. They are a separate government, and we should at least wait to have this discussion until they're past that crisis. There's nothing in item one or three that can't wait until they find their feet under themselves. And I think there's a good possibility this will be perceived in not exactly, i- i- if we want their cooperation, and there has been a history of tension, we should not exacerbate it by having this discussion whilst they're in the midst of coping. So it just seems to me a matter of politeness to wait until next month and then have had this. But, you know, I could be wrong. That's all.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I agree. I think that we would not appreciate King County doing that to us if they felt like we had been lacking in some responsibility. We are continually, even today, talking about the overstepping of superior governments, whether it's the county or the state. And we like to retain our authority when we can, even if we are possibly making mistakes. And so I, I really think a pre-authorization makes a, makes a statement that we've already, we, we're preempting that discussion. And so I, I like to treat people like I want to be treated. Thank you.
Councilwoman Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I really think we're sort of, the last two comments, this is a ready-fire-aim approach. We hope it works out. You know, maybe they're going to come to us, maybe they're not going to come to us. We don't know how all of this is going to play out. I think the best thing that we can do is be prepared to offer assistance to District, to Water District 54. I, I don't know why they would think that was a hostile act in any way, and particularly because we're already saying, look, if you need the resources to have a consultant come in and evaluate, we've already approved the money to do that. That, more information is good, and that's what needs to be gotten across to them. So I think it is good to have this pre-authorization of a consultant, ready to go if necessary, and then move forward accordingly. You know, you don't want to just wait and hope for the best. In this case, we can come to them with some pretty sure resources that are available to them to do the proper after-action report, identify the goals, and then provide a consultant if necessary. I think that's the best approach to do. I would hope that would not be considered any ill will on our part towards the Water District, but we need to protect the citizens of Des Moines, and we need to be able to move forward with it.
Councilmember Oxiger.
I don't think that, you know, it's a, it's a question of having to have the, the, you know, ready to go with the thing and that suddenly we're going to implement it on ourselves. I think that, that Deputy Mayor Buxton is correct. I mean, there's the perception here, and if we don't like being treated this way, then we shouldn't be treating other people that way. And so I agree with Council, with Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Councilmember Pennington.
Again, having served time at the Water District, I, I am fully aware of the perception, I'm fully aware of the generational, the historic, for probably decades, poor relationship the Water District and the city has had. I was able to bridge some of those gaps when I was, was the, on, on the commission there. But, and, and so, you know, your points are, are valid, they're, they're, they're well-taken. And, and, and you're right, that they'll have that, whether you do the pre-authorization or you wait a month, or two, or six, or eight, the same perception will be there. So it, it, because I know the culture, and I know the attitude, and I know their concerns. Some of their concerns are probably valid. But I, and I understand them. And so we, and, and if we sit in a meeting and say, this is what we, you know, what do you think about this? This is what should probably happen to, to make all this legitimate. You know, you're still going to have the pushback. So to, to be able to, to sit down and have a conversation and say, these are some resources that are available, that, that can be made available to do this collaboratively, is, is a good thing to have. And not, well, we might be able to do that. You know, how do you make a, a, a commitment on, we might be able to? You need to be able to go in and be able to make that commitment. And so to, to offer resources. And, and if that's pre-authorized, then, then we can, we can, we can have the discussion of, of what it looks like with, with the Water District and what the parameters of that are. But at least we have, we know that we have that tool in the, in the toolbox that we can use if we need to use that.
I'm going to go ahead and make a comment, and then I'm going to take a vote on this, because we need to move on to the meeting. I will tell you that, yes, in this, on, in the initial right now, I'm talking to many businesses who are very frustrated. And what's been frustrating is trying to get updates and so forth to pass on information. In my review of the 2019 communication and so forth, I can tell you, what they've done since, my confidence is not high. And that's why I believe there did, needs to be a review. I'm very concerned about the current, current conditions of the infrastructure and even more about what we're trying to do in the future. And then the bottom line is that all adds up to the safety of our residents and the ability for our businesses to operate and consider, and continue to thrive. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and take a vote on number three. And all those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Council, Councilmember Nutting, and myself, all those opposed, Councilmember Harris, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Oxiger. Initiative, or recommendation three does pass. All right. Moving on. Next, next statement. So I want to talk about the ferry. Our residents were extremely excited. Thank you. Our residents were extremely excited for this year's expanded water taxi service. The city had planned to add days and expand service hours to accommodate more passengers and allow flexibility in times to serve our residents and the surrounding communities for visitation to Seattle and tourists and Seattleites to visit our fine city. Local businesses, particularly our residents, were excited to welcome these new customers, bringing new revenue to increase opportunities for our local merchants to thrive. In addition to the added media exposure the water taxi service would bring, our city had several marketing entities in play, and there was much optimism in the multitude of benefits water taxi service brings our city. The expanded pilot program was intended to further demonstrate the previous year's success and expand upon it. We have developed new relationships, including partnerships with King County, and discussion was already in the making about future partnerships, including a new one this year with the use of the King County docks. of the King County docks. It was unfortunate to learn the Billy Jay, while en route to Des Moines, encountered a catastrophic failure of the custom-made carbon fiber drive shaft while tran- transiting along the Oregon coast en route from San Francisco. The replacement shaft must be custom-built, shipped to Newport, Oregon, and installed on-site before the vessel can resume its journey. The additional route testing, Coast Guard inspections, and other steps needed to ensure a safe and reliable reliable service would not have allowed us to start regular service until well into August or later. Initially, the city had tried to get the Chill Cat Express, the boat we used last year. However, unfortunately, the owner has the craft for sale and was not willing to enter into an agreement that would tie up the vessel. Since the speed of the craft is essential component to keeping a timely schedule versus a mere touring boat such as an Argosy Cruise, we require a high-speed boat for our needs. High-speed vessels of the type we require are not currently available for charter to provide service this summer in the sound. Uppermost in our decision to cancel this year's service was our desire to ensure a safe and reliable boat. Those currently aren't available for this reason for this season. Making the decision to cancel this year's program was difficult, but unfortunately, due to the lack of availability of the watercraft, canceling service this year was our our only choice. Though we are disappointed that that we will not be able to bring the and 30,000 anticipated water taxi passengers through downtown to Des Moines this year, we are already looking at the options for resuming resuming water taxi service next year. Even without actual service, we learned a lot this year and made some key connections with potential partners that will engage to ensure the long viability of water taxi service between the Des Moines Marina, downtown Seattle, and perhaps other destinations as well. The city will continue exploring options and partnering partners for future years, which could include electrification as mentioned or mentioned, additional destinations such as Tacoma or Point Ruston, and the city manager and the consultant plan to keep us appraised of those opportunities in the coming months. Are there are there any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
All right. It is now time for public comment. I would like to just remind those participants that any person making personally impertinent or slanderous remarks or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting, and you will have three minutes to speak. With that, Mr. Chuck Coleman, you're first on the docket.
Thanks for the timing on this. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Manager, and staff. For the record, Chuck Coleman, Redondo Beach Drive South. Speaking to you today, representing nearly 200 members of the Redondo Community Association, I'm here to deliver a message that the association would like to thank the city for their efforts to reduce unlawful street racing and reckless speeding in our neighborhood. This appreciation includes the flock camera project, fire lane, parking designations, and emphasis patrols. The association was very pleased that the contract for the speed cameras was approved by the city on June 1st. The association is now obviously very anxious to see the cameras installed and up and operating hopefully provide another deterrent to unlawful actions. The association recognizes that what seemingly can be simple projects to accomplish are usually more complicated than imagined. The association is patient but wants to make sure this project is not delayed by staff, given the huge number of ongoing important city-managed projects. This is especially being brought to the forefront by recent news releases of neighboring cities of Kent and Seattle announcing urgent needs for speed camera projects. Without being overly dramatic, the urgency of for this project in Redondo cannot be fully understood unless you happen to live it every day. The association has two requests. The contract requires a project timeline within 30 days of contract execution and further maximum and further requires maximum efforts on both parties to maintain that schedule. The association requests a copy of the required schedule so that the residents can be informed and avoid any miscommunication, and therefore, community expectations can be managed. The contract requires also requires project managers to be designated within seven days of contract execution to manage the project. In order to streamline communications and again, manage neighborhood expectations, the association requests that the city provide project manager communications with Chuck Coleman or David Emery, who are members of the Citizens Advisory Committee, on pertinent project issues. To summarize, the association offers to assist the city in any way possible. Thank you very much for your consideration of these requests.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Oh, um, did you did you want to interject, City Attorney?
Yeah, well, I'll just I I'm on the city manager's report to talk about this exact issue. So if you want, I can just respond right now.
Let's let's go ahead, just because it happens to be relevant right now.
Okay, so I'll tell you, we're making great progress. That was my first note to pass along. So these are going to be the first park zone cameras in the state, based on the legislation that the state recently passed. So there's no blueprint, we're basically creating the blueprint. So we've been meeting weekly with the vendor. We have a whole city staff team that's working on this. We have two engineers, legal department, we've gotten our finance department involved for the the setup costs. We also have PSE involved, and they're working on getting power to these sites. So our the focus of this process that we're all working together, we all have staff involved on it, it's not about the speed, it's about doing it correctly, because we are the first in the state, we don't have anyone to follow, and we know we're going to get a lot of challenges to these tickets, because just as many people want the cameras there when people are driving back and forth and they're getting tickets in the mail, we're going to have a lot of the council's going to get a lot of comments, and we're going to have a lot of challenges in court. So we want to make sure we do this all correctly, and we are doing it correctly. As far as updates go, Redondo Beach Drive, that's looks like that's going to be phase one, going north and south. That site is fairly not simple, but it's 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 more practical based on sightlines, locating poles, and getting power to that site. So that site looks really good. We're working on some other logistical issues. There's a number of challenges on east-west going up the hill on Redondo Way because of the curves, the location of the park, and then there's a lot of tree cover there that creates issues with sight sightlines, and also power is an issue out there, which we're working on right now. So I I'll just note the reference to the 30 days. So the council approved the contract. This is the feasibility point at this time. Once we sign the notice to proceed, that's when those timelines kick in. We haven't signed that notice to proceed yet because we need to make sure that it's feasible. So we're looking at doing that soon, but I will tell you that we have a a team on it that involves the the vendor, PSE, and our staff, and we're working on it, we're meeting week weekly, so.
All right, moving on to Ms. Victoria Andrews.
Thank you. I want to thank you for that great discussion about the water issue, because that's one of the things I want to talk about. The city manager is having his performance review tonight, and the two issues you brought up are the two issues I'm bringing up, which I wrote prior to coming to this meeting. So I will go off script a little bit later. The recent example is the ferry's cancellation. I have friends in Kent who took the ferry last year and had been asking me if I knew what was going on. Whenever the city learned about the boat's mechanical failure, one of the things it could and should have done was to place a sandwich board sign at the dock to let farmers' market patrons and other visitors who do and don't live in Des Moines know that it was canceled. I'm not sure whose job that would have been, but evidently, it's not the harbor master who forwarded my suggestion to City Hall. In 2022, the city clerk's job description was expanded to include communications director. No one human being can adequately accomplish all the functions described in this job description, and she shouldn't. I hope you will ask the city manager why he feels resources need not be allocated to a dedicated communications professional, because you all agree there are enormous gaps in communication to to the residents. Next, the boil water advisory, and here's where I'm going to go off script. I did speak to someone from the district today on my walk who was flushing the drain, and I said, how's it going? And he said, well, we've had the last two samples came back good, but DOH says that the chlorine is fluctuating, and they want to see that smoothed out. So that's why he was flushing the drain. So I said, so, another couple of days? And he said, no, hopefully tomorrow, because the restaurants are going to kill me otherwise. So there's my my one piece of information for you. I did call the Water District on Monday and spoke with Patty Clayton to ask how the news would be disseminated when the water was safe to drink again, and I was told via their website, the Waterland blog, Code Red, and social media. Thank you, Councilmember Harris, for telling us about Code Red. The notice did not say anything about Code Red, and she should, but she got there at 6:00 in the morning, she said, after learning about this and wrestling with it till midnight. So she was doing the best she could. I wonder if she didn't know the city has a Director of Emergency Management. It it did get to the CIO who posted it on Facebook, and it seems that was as far as the city went, at least to me, since the district is an independent agency, I was told twice. At least Bonney did something on Father's Day, Sunday, bless her heart, but the city has a responsibility, as you've all said tonight, to coordinate emergency management for its residents, even if an independent entity is the primary agency. These two unrelated issues, the ferry and the water advisory, are symptomatic of the city's big gaps in public outreach, so have a frank discussion with the city manager tonight on how he can address those. I emailed him on Monday with my concerns, and to date, I have had no response, not even a polite thank you. And did I expect one? Yes, I hoped for one, and I'm hoping the situation does improve once the consultant's communication plan is presented, approved, and implemented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Moving on to Mr. David Emery.
Hi, all. My name's David Emery. I'm a resident of the city of Des Moines. I'm addressing the council this evening simply as a private citizen regarding the traffic issues in the Redondo Beach neighborhood. I know you all know that we have significant problems with both traffic noise and reckless driving in the Redondo Beach neighborhood. I appreciate the engineering controls the city is working on and the special emphasis patrols that the police are working on, but all of that said, I'm here tonight to make clear that I believe more is needed and to highlight a few examples. I've seen a lot of interest from the mayor and other members of the council recently on the new information coming out about the negative impacts of the airport-related noise on the physiological health of impacted neighborhoods. The Redondo Beach neighborhood is right under the flight path of commercial airplanes taking off and landing at SeaTac, and I can tell you right now that the level of jarring street noise in the late afternoons and evenings in my neighborhood are often far more disturbing and disruptive than any noise from the airplanes. This gives you an idea of the impact of this noise on our health down there. I also wanted to share with you that there's been a sharp increase in street racers performing burnouts and donuts in and around the neighborhood, to the point that the blacktop in the area of the boat launch parking lot looks more like a drifting racecourse than it does a residential neighborhood. I'm hoping the city can recognize that these tire marks are like graffiti, inviting others to leave their own burnouts in return. And finally, I'd like to say something about a recent experience I had with the police call center. This is an evening when there was a significant police presence already down in our area, and a couple of cruisers had tried and failed to stop a group of renegade bike dirt dirt bike riders. Later in the evening, after the dust had settled, three separate new groups of street racing cars showed up, were roaring around the neighborhood with complete disregard for speed limits, stop signs, pedestrians, and crosswalks. I called the call center to make sure the police were aware of these new groups and was informed that the police had left the neighborhood after the failing to stop the dirt bikers and would not, and I quote, be returning to the neighborhood that evening. I sure hope that is not the official stance of the police department in this regard. Thank you for your continued support in addressing these traffic issues in the Redondo Beach neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Emery. Moving on to Mr. Gary Peterson, Jr.
I I'm Gary. I'm talk I want to talk about the Fifth Street where I live. I getting tired of people parking in front of my gate. Is there any way we could put two cones there? Because I went up to myself to buy some paint, I made a line, and somebody painted primer over it. I don't know who it was, but I want to say, I'm sorry I did that, but I want it to stop so people don't block my driveway. And the Fifth Street, people are running up and down the road, speeding again, and drugs and marijuana and everything else. I want you guys to do something to stop it. I it's getting ridiculous, the next-door neighbors are getting fed up with it, and it needs to stop. That's all I got to say, but I want to say if if it's okay to put two cones where I so people could not block our driveway when the ramp goes down. That's all I have to say, yeah.
Don't have an answer for you today. We'll have to refer to the city for for them to contact you at a later time. Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Moving on to Mr. Michael Rhodes.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilors, happy summer. It's finally summer. It's the longest day of the year today. Isn't that wonderful? But actually, summer started last week, more of a day weekend or two weekends ago, because the Marina has changed its configuration. You know, a year ago, we had this huge pile of dirt and a lot of construction going on, and the parking lot shrunk and so on and so forth, which limited a lot of these people who are out there now raising cane or whatever you want to call it, they weren't there. But the minute it became a hole again, and the weather turned nice, on any given day, if the sun is shining, those parking lots are full. And it's kind of like the good, the bad, and the ugly. The good is they're going to the park, they're having celebrations, they're having weddings, they're having remembered ceremonies, they're going to the to the quarter deck for a for a libation. That's all great. The bad is that once it's dark, once the sun's gone down, here come all the little creepy crawlies out to have a big meeting down by the the end of the end of the road down there, and they party hearty and make a lot of noise. And then by the time you call the dispatch and somebody can get down there, they roar it off. Now, the other night, I was awakened to some really outstanding rap music at about 2:00 in the morning, and so I called the the dispatch and got a call back from our police, the Des Moines Dispatch, who wanted to know the specifics. Sure, so I told him, and man, three cars, boom, ran them off, it got quiet, and I finally got a half a night's sleep, which is wonderful. Now, the real ugly is is that these cars are coming down there, coming down Cliff Drive, which has got a slope on it, as you well know, boom, boom, crack, crack, boom, boom, boom. And when they leave, it's that happens all night. Now, we need the cops are great, and I love them for coming down and responding to my calls. Thank you very much, but we need to help them out. How do we help them out? Number one, we put the gates back up fast. If we do that and close down that parking lot at dusk or dusk plus 30, they won't come down there, they don't want to pay pay five bucks or whatever it's going to be, and they'll go do their dope dealing down at the the handicap parking where they used to do it. So we need to help our officers contribute to our safety and security, which is what you've all been talking about. We want safety and security too. And oh, by the way, the toilets don't work again. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes, one thing I might add that you can help us and and get your neighbors to do is we've been one of the cities pushing the initiative for aftermarket mufflers to be banned, and we would love if you would write to your state legislators to support that initiative.
Consider it done.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Well, the city clerk or was it we're moving on the city manager's report. My my bad. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I want to make just a brief comment. This is not common practice, but Ms. Andrews, in your critique... But Ms. Andrews, in your critique, it wasn't, what was it, two weeks ago I invited you to come see me if you had time or interest? I never heard from you. So in terms of communication, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about any issues you raise. I wasn't lying. I was asking you sincerely if you're interested in talking to me. I'm more than available. Okay. We were originally going to have South King County Community Impact Fund. The representative from the county was ill, so we'll postpone that to another day. And the only other item on the, the manager's report tonight is the first quarter 2023 financial report, and that will be from Jeff Friend, our finance director.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Jeff Friend, Finance Director, here to report on the first quarter of 2023. The first slide that you see here is revenue and expenditures for the general fund. This chart represents the budget, the annual budget. The column on the left is revenue. The annual budget is twenty-four eight point eight million dollars. The budget for expenditures, the column on the right, is about twenty-seven point two million dollars. The section of the column at the bottom in blue or aqua represents the amount of budget that we've either collected revenue or made expenditures through the first quarter. So it's been about four point seven million dollars of revenue collected and six point four million dollars of expenditures. The yellow areas are the remaining budget for the rest of the year, which is twenty million dollars of revenue to be collected and then twenty point eight million dollars of expenditures remaining in the budget. This chart here shows different categories of revenue and also has a row for operating expenses. The bar at the twenty-five percent mark represents the first quarter. So that would be twenty-five percent of the year has passed. The revenue categories are in order of magnitude to the city. So property taxes is our main revenue source or our top revenue source. As you can see, that's quite low because we collect a majority of property taxes in April and October. We'll also be taking a look at each category in more detail in following slides. Also, you can see as far as that twenty-five percent, that most revenue categories listed on the schedule are over that mark, over twenty-five percent collected. That's good news. Sales tax is just a little bit under twenty-five percent. And operating expenses on the bottom, there, though they were greater than revenue, are under twenty-five percent for the year as of March thirty-first. I also failed to mention that there is a first quarter report on the Finance Department website now that shows a little bit more detail than, than these slides, and that's available already. So looking at each category more specifically and comparing it to prior years. So you have different groupings here by quarter. So Quarter One, you can see all four years. That's 2020 in blue, followed by 2021, 2022, and then finally 2023. That's supposed to be kind of an orange. You never want red in a financial presentation. But you can see, as I said, we, we collect property tax mainly in the second quarter and the fourth quarter. So it's pretty normal to have a small amount in, in the first quarter. So you can see we got about twenty, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, and that's about four point five percent of budget. But as you can see, we can, we'll be catching up later in the year in quarters, two and four specifically, helping us out. Second quarter, or the second, next slide is utility taxes. We collected one point two million dollars of utility taxes, which is a bit more than this time last year. And that is twenty-six point eight percent of budget. So those were a healthy collection. Sales taxes, you can see in the same first grouping there. Quarter one, we collected nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars of regular sales tax. This does not include one-time sales tax, which is a, a tax on construction supplies for projects that are valued over fifteen million dollars. That is separated out. It does remain in the general fund for this year as that was the way it was budgeted. Typically, that's moved to a different fund. But I just wanted to clarify that this is a regular sales tax. By category, within the sales tax, you can see that we are twenty-five thousand in that, sorry, in the, I think that's the fourth column, the change, second to last column. The total is twenty-five thousand five hundred nineteen. That's how much more we collected in 2023 than 2022 at the same time. All categories are up, excluding wholesale and miscellaneous. Those are slightly down from the last, or the first quarter last year. But it's a two point eight eight percent increase over the prior year. B and O tax, B and O tax is up. We collected three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of B and O taxes. These are regular B and O taxes. B and O tax is similar to the sales tax in that there's a one-time portion account, which is part of the same fifteen million dollar projects. That is also broken out. So this is a regular. Also represents thirty-one point two seven percent of budget. And I just wanted to comment that you noticed that the, the 2023 bar is higher than the, the two bars preceding that for 2021 and 2022. One of the changes in this time period, which would begin with 2020, is that in 2021 and 2022, annual filers were allowed to file their B and O taxes until April fifteenth. So if you notice, the first quarter and second quarter, the first two groupings are a bit higher than the third and fourth, that we get a majority of the taxes in that timeframe. Right now, also, we are encouraging those entities that report three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less to file annually and not quarterly. So we have, see that reflected here too in a little bit more of a collection in the first quarter. So we should see some more in the second quarter and then third and fourth. It should be leveled off to, to lower levels. Franchise fees, we collected three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in the first quarter. And that's about thirty point eight percent of budget. And you can see, compared to the prior years, just a touch below. That's like six thousand dollars less. So that's right on target. And they're a function of franchise agreements, so that's pretty standard. They're a result of calculations of those contracts. Criminal justice, sales tax. This is sales tax that, dictated by the county that is dedicated towards criminal justice and public safety. It really reflects the same trends as just the regular sales tax. We collected three hundred and two thousand dollars in the first quarter, which is up over the prior year. I mean, if you lined up this with regular sales tax, they'd be the same chart. So this is twenty-five point five percent of budget. Red light running. This is a fun one. This was, I enjoyed this one on this report. So 2023, you'll notice, in the first quarter is much higher than it has been since 2020. When first seeing this, we thought, wow, people are driving a lot worse in the first quarter. But in chatting with the, the court, what I learned was that they, they changed bill, they checked, they changed collection agencies. And apparently, people respond a lot more to a law firm than they do to a regular collection agency. So they've been able to collect a lot more funds. So that's why you see the, the large increase there. So we collected three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in the first quarter, which is twenty-eight point seven percent. If the, if that holds, it's doubtful. We expect it to go down a bit in the second, third quarter, but, you know, we'll see.
Jeff, if I'm, if I may add to that also, I had an interesting discussion with Assistant Chief Kui, who's with us tonight. And, you know, we, we had attributed the decrease in the red light running to the fact that behaviors had changed to be more compliant with laws. But on the other hand, in the discussion today, the police are very much hamstrung in their ability to pursue offenders on multiple different levels. And so probably, you know, people that are sliding, starting to figure that out realize that there are no consequences, and that, that's kind of the beauty of the red light cameras. It can identify an infraction, and people can then be billed for that. But that's some of the basis of the increase. So we'll have to, and that's an absolute trend issue. So as council reviews these quarterly reports over time, we'll see what the trend looks like for those.
I would add, most likely, the return to work from COVID in the first quarter was one of the first more full travel and, you know, commuting windows. So that would probably be an added factor as well.
In the final slide, we're looking at the general fund fund balance. At the end of 2022, as we reported the last meeting, the fund balance was slightly over eight million dollars, which was thirty-one point three percent of recurring operating expenditures. And by code, we want to maintain sixteen point six seven percent of recurring operating expenditures. At the end of March, as we looked at it in the first slide, we saw that expenditures exceeded revenue by about one point seven million dollars. So therefore, fund balance dropped in the first quarter by that amount, now down to twenty-three point three percent of recurring operating expenditures. But it should be noted also that we don't receive, as we saw, property tax in the first quarter. So we do expect that to rebound in the second quarter. And that would be the end of my presentation. If there's any questions?
Questions from the council? Deputy Mayor Buckston.
A trivia question about red light running and citations. Do they go, do you, we have our own contract that, that dictates what the citations are going to be in accordance with how much we pay our vendor? Or are they just citations? We have a certain code for citations? And I guess along with that, whatever determines when our citation, our citations raise, like the, the price of a citation raises?
Yeah, that might be a Tim question.
It's a uniform number that was set by the council for speeding and for running red lights and the school zone. So it's a uniform number for the citations. You can either request a mitigation hearing and ask the court to reduce the fine, which happens a lot. If you contest it generally and you lose, you are required to pay the full fine. Some people just don't respond. And then generally, there's an administrative fee that's added after that, and then sent off to collections.
So does it, anytime, let's say the citation is a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Would it, would it only go to a hundred and forty-five if, by decision of the council?
If.
Just for example? Because the judge reduces it in accordance to how she feels, feels is best, but.
There are limits in state law on the maximum that these fines can be. And I believe we might be at the maximum, at least for the school zones. And then red lights, I believe, are, are by statute anyway. That's a, a penalty that's set by the legislature for running a red light.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. How is the File Local software? I, I seem to recall that there were some challenges getting that going. Is that running smoothly now?
Yeah. I would say, I've looked into this issue recently because state law dictates that you use either the state or themselves or File Local, which is really, in a sense, neither is a great choice. So I was looking at that, seeing if, if we should stay on File Local. I talked to our consultant, because I was leaning heavily towards not staying, staying with File Local, but talking to our consultant, who works with it a lot more closely than I do, and our staff accountant, is that, that's, businesses have started to like it. We've got it streamlined, especially over the last year, now that we have a dedicated person working on business licenses and B and O taxes. They've worked out a lot of the things. So it's actually gone a lot smoother, and businesses are happier with it, and that keeps our revenue up. So we do have about sixty percent on File Local, and the rest still doing paper.
Okay, I just, you know, I can never tell when I talk to local businesses if it's just, you know, grousing about having to pay taxes in general or, but there, there is this sense that some other cities are, the software is easier to grok and so on. So I, that's why I ask if it's just, you know, functioning as.
There is, there can be legitimate complaints about File Local. And it, part of it also relates to the business owner's software ability, ability to work the website, or is, I guess, how advanced their skills are. Not that you have to have really advanced skills, or, but just general competency. But there are, there are customer service issues that are, you can file a ticket and we follow through, which has been a challenge, but that has improved over time since we've been working with them. So I think now it's, I think we're worlds better than we were about a year ago. So that's how I would say so. It's, but it is like business pay, business owners don't want to pay taxes.
No, I'm, I'm just, it's fascinating to me because we have these food trucks now, you know, and they wander all over this great county. And so they sort of, you know, give us this, or they talk about what their preferences are. So, okay, thank you very much.
I have one question. It's really, obviously, thank you for the report on Q1. But the property taxes and being that the second quarter is one of the bigger, bigger quarters for that, as far as like quarter to date, do we look like we're in line with what you're expecting?
I would say yes. I think that in the first quarter, especially in the general fund, that there were some expenditures. How do I say it? There'd be, there's going to be some revenue coming in in quarter two, as far as the general fund is concerned. There's going to be some ARPA funds that are transferred in, because we looked at, looked at that. There's some that we couldn't transfer last year because we didn't have the budget capacity. So we're, we're catching up with that. But being that the expenditure is at twenty-three point five percent of budget, I would say that that's, yeah, close to our expectations.
Great, great, thank you. City Manager Mathew, do you have one more item, I believe?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. One last thing is to announce, which we have alluded to, but we have hired a new police chief. His name is Chief, currently a captain in the Redmond Police Department. His name is Tim Gately. And he will start probably mid, mid-August. And so he's currently teaching a course at the FBI headquarters in Quantico that he had committed to previously. And so we're really excited to see him come on board. I know that Mark's going to school him in all the ways of Des Moines. And also, the, the, the other part of that was just having a fabulous send-off for Chief Thomas about a week ago. And that was, that was a really great experience, I think, for everyone. But we're excited. Chief Gately will start, and we'll just go from there. And hopefully, he can pick up where Chief Thomas left off and add his own imprint with the cooperation and leadership of, of the troops. So that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, 2023 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee spending recommendations. Item three, Twenty-Fourth Avenue Improvement Projects, Right-of-Way Acquisition. Item four, Field House Playground Equipment Upgrade, Construction Contract and Consultant Agreement. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Penning, or Nutty.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second. Second. Councilmember Pennington has seconded it. Does any council member wish to pull an item? Councilmember Harris.
I believe item two, the lodging tax.
Okay. Councilmember Oxger.
I'd like to pull item four.
Okay. All right. Any other items? Seeing none? Okay, the consent agenda will consist of items one and item three. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those pass unanimously. All right, we will move on to item two. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Just a quick question. I noticed in, you know, a, a list of stuff for July the fourth. Or do, do we have any kind of, you know, promotional material set up for that? It's, it sounds like it's much more than just the drones. So do we have that ready? Or when will that kind of material be available?
Councilmember, we thought we would provide that July fifth. No, I'm just kidding. I think we have a summary of some of those expenditures. Tara, do you see the? It's this, it's the Excel sheet, I think. The second slide. Okay, so.
I'm going to make a figure. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So that kind of goes into what the costs associated with the 4th of July events are. Approximately, let's see, it was 90 for the fireworks. Throw the drone? Yeah. We had a slight disruption in our staff. Our events administrator left the city on good terms, but she had an opportunity to work closer to home. So we will have to, we're working with the RTA, we'll have to provide that to you at some, after this meeting, I believe.
I just, I, it's, it sounds like they're going to be banned during the day in a stage and so on. And I just wanted to be able to get the word out to the public to, you know, show up and-
Yeah, and that's very worthwhile, and we'll be happy to provide what we have. I thought it was on this.
That's it?
Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the recommendation as submitted by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to the expenditure of the lodging tax funds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take Councilmember Steinmetz as a second this time. All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Oxegar?
I'm just wondering, in this application, it cites a, a number of people staying overnight in order to see the drone show. How are we monitoring that? How are we, you know, going to be document whether or not this is actually happening?
So that's a structured estimate, if you see on the application. They noted that.
Okay, but is there any way that, that we're actually pursuing this, that we're going to be able to determine, you know, whether or not this is actually happening or not?
No, I mean, that's, it's an estimate. But that, that, that's how we do every application every year. If the council members, you know, the council's been approving funding for the, for the July events for a number of years out of lodging tax funds. Previously, applications were made by destination Des Moines through the RTA, using the same application forms, which then the city would then confirm. So there's, there's, the city does a direct count, as you can see, on the overall attendance. And then based on that, they look at, there's formulas used to figure out what they would consider a structured estimate. So are we checking hotels to see who's going to the event? No?
Okay, well, the, the reason I ask is that this is, this is an experiment this year of switching to drones over the fireworks. And it would be interesting to find out if it actually has any effect on, on the local businesses, whether the, the, the switch is, is worth it. I would think that the, the Lodging Tax Committee would be interested in such, such numbers.
I'll be glad to respond to that. I, leading up the lodging tax, obviously, two of the members on it are from the Sheridan Four Points, because they're the major donor of, of lodging taxes. And I would be glad afterwards to follow up with them and report to the council, since it's never really been done. But I'd see if there was an impact. And I might stop by the Marina Inn as well, just to, just to hear out what the year-over-year comparison. That's about the best I could offer.
That'd certainly be helpful. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the 2023 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Spending Recommendation for the fireworks, raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous. All right. Item four, moving on to the Field House Playground Equipment. Councilmember Oxegar, you have the floor.
Yes, in looking, I'm sorry. Yes, in looking at the funding sources for this, I don't see there is a pledge of $25,000 from the Legacy Foundation towards this project. I don't see that recorded. Is that, am I missing something?
No. So on attachment one in the packet, in the CIP worksheet, down in the funding sources, there is the private contribution line for the 27,000. I believe that's what you're referring to.
Is that where it is?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
No.
Sorry.
All right. Councilmember Nutting. Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Councilmember Harris, did you have questions?
I, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Let's make the motion, and then we'll take a question. All right.
I move to direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment to the 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Plan and the 2023 capital budget to include the amended Field House Playground Equipment Upgrade Project as shown in attachment one and as described herein, and include such amendment in the next available budget amendment ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Deputy Mayor Buckston. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Since you're standing there, I just couldn't, is, so I'm struck by the, you know, fairly dramatic increase in the costs of the materials, you know, over the past couple of years. And I, my, it's, maybe it's a vague question, but is this to be expected going forward? Or do we expect things to roll back, you know, or is this just, people are grabbing profits because they can now on playground equipment?
I can't predict the future, but I mean, the past three years, we've seen about a 15% price increase per year in the heavy civil industry. We are starting to see a little bit of price moderation, because the private sector, commercial real estate and all that is slowing down a little bit. But the last report I read, we're still seeing a positive increase in inflation in public sector, public works projects. I'm hoping, I, I think all indicators say by the second quarter of 2024, we should start seeing a leveling of construction costs and materials. I think the big driver is going to be how labor reacts to that as well. But it's probably not going to be till mid next year, till we start seeing the inflation level off.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question. First of all, thank you. I know this one, we waited a year before we could do it. But obviously, the concern, and particularly from residents in the, about the, about the Cecil Powell Park. Could you talk about, kind of give us a rough, general timeline of when, when we might see something on that in the future? Just to give us an idea.
Sure. So for Cecil Powell Park, you know, this park, Field House Park, it's going for contract approval tonight, so that will get ramped up. And Cecil Powell's been our second priority from a park perspective, and we're trying to get that out to public bidding by the end of July. That's the target for staff. It's on everybody's plate. We're trying to get it out the door.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none?
No.
I'm, okay, sorry. Go ahead. Councilmember Oxegar?
So is, so Cecil Powell is next. What, do we have a, do we have a list in order of when we're going to pick up the other parks?
So staff looks at the capital improvement plan that's adopted by the city council. And when you look at all the projects and all the priorities, you can see where, say, construction funding is programmed to begin. So staff looks at that list, and we kind of tackle those priorities according to which one has, you know, in order to that, to that CIP list. We also look at funding sources, as well as the likelihood of near-term versus long-term success on delivering those projects. But generally, we follow the CIP that's been adopted.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. All those in favor of the Field House Playground Equipment, raise your right hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. We had three motions? Oh. Can we get the motions up? I'm sorry, for some reason, I only had the one. Okay, go ahead and do the second motion. You did, that was the first one probably in the reading, I assume?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've passed the first motion. Let's go to the second.
I move to approve the public works contract with PMO WLLC contractor for Field House Playground Equipment Upgrade Project based, base bid plus bid alter, alternate additive number one proposal in the amount of $520,000, $525.28, authorizing a project construction contingency in the amount of $47,500, and further authorize the city manager to, to sign contracts sustain, sustain, sustainably in the form as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buckston. Any discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none? All those in favor of motion two, raise your right hand. Passed unanimously. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the 2022-2023 On Call General Civil Engineering Service Tasks Assignment 2022-03 with Per Tite Inc. for the Field House Playground Equipment Upgrade Project in the amount of $23,724.00 for construction administrative services, and further authorize the city manager to sign said agreement substantially in the form as submitted.
Second.
Okay, I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buckston. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, raise your hand on motion three. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. Good to see you. All right. Before we go into old business, which is the, would be the third reading of the Des Moines City Council Protocol Manual, we have to finish this by 8:45, and then we would go into executive session and complete the meeting by 9:30. So we need a motion to extend to that. Now, there's a couple of things that are in factor here. We can either do this, do it for a period of time and go into board and committee reports, or we can just work on the council rules until 8:45. Then we would go to executive session and complete the meeting thereafter. So those are the options. And I want to go down the line. Councilmember Pennington, which do you prefer?
Well, I think it's been three weeks since we've had a board and committee report. It, you know, I mean, I only have one thing to report on tonight, and the others are pretty far past in history. So I, we can work on the protocols and move into the city manager report.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
It seems to me like we're, you know, nearing the end, so I, I wouldn't anticipate that we would need to go beyond a normal time. So, yeah.
To finish the council rules? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Councilmember Steinmetz?
My priority would be to finish the council rules.
Okay. Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Buckston?
Ditto. Did, ditto.
Ditto? Okay.
Ditto.
Yeah. And Councilmember Nutting?
Yeah, I, I, I would move that we finish the-
Or at least go to 8:45.
-call and, and then move into the city manager review.
Okay.
So just forego the board and committee and presiding officer report, no matter what time we get done, so we can finish up.
Councilmember Oxegar?
I just, let's proceed with the-
Council rules?
Council rules.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm saying, and I'm going to make a motion, that we continue the council rules, but we have a hard stop, no matter what we finish or not, at 8:45. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington. I see Councilmember Harris. I see Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Buckston, Councilmember Nutting, Council, Councilmember Oxegar, and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Steinmetz. The motion passed. The motion, the motion passes six one. So we will proceed with the, with the council rules until 8:45. And with that, we had left off council, and we'd had a fervent discussion concerning whether reinstating the rule of 26A or not. So because we'd had such a fervent conversation, and I'm trying to move this meeting along some, I would prefer that in this particular discussion, everybody have their last discussion, and then let's take a vote on that, and then move on to the next item. And meanwhile, you're pulling, you're pulling up the, yeah, the council rules that we have? Okay. So this was not in the manual, because of, just to remind everybody in our, in our public, that 26A was not included. The, the opinion of some was that, that the council can ask for a second reading when it's worthy, and it'd become a formality. And others felt that it was necessary to give the public a second pass. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, and I'm going to give one wave of discussion, and I'd like to try to take a vote. Would that open up the floor to the first person that'd like to speak? Councilmember Oxegar, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, 26A, you know, to say that, to say that the public has a first pass, I think is, you know, somewhat erroneous, because, yes, they can read the packet, but they want to see, I'm, they want to see what our responses are up here. And because their opportunity to speak to the issue happens before we announce what we're doing, or what our intention is, they don't have that opportunity. There's, you know, our, our system is set up to be deliberative, and this does not give the public, eliminating 26A, does not give the public sufficient opportunity to respond.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
This boil water notice is a perfect example of why you need to have this second reading. Many people are not aware of key issues until the first meeting, okay? They hear about something in the Waterland Blog, or they hear, well, did you hear what happened on Facebook, or some other thing? But they don't find about, out about it until the first reading. And so if, if we improve our communication system dramatically, by an order of magnitude, then I, I think you could start talking about defaulting to a single reading. But we have not improved our communication, I'm sorry, in, in like years and years and years. And until we make that leap, we need to err on the side of giving as many of these items a second reading as possible. And I'll just close by saying what I said before, is that the second reading takes no more than three minutes. If there are already the votes, people just vote, and you're done with it. So it's, it's not a time saver. But it would substantially increase the public engagement that we say we so desperately want. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Well, I, I disagree. I think that it's very easy for people to just show up to a council meeting right now and figure out what's going on. I think that what we have done as a council, and I don't necessarily like this result, but necessarily, that's what we've done, is, and this happened on the council before I got into it, which was, the exception has swallowed the rule. We just don't, we, we waive, waive 26A on almost everything, except for those issues that are controversial, that it's apparent that we need to give it a little more time in order to get people's opinion. And, and as a consequence, I think that's the practice that we do now, under any circumstances, even with 26A on the books. If we take it off the books, we're still in exactly the same position. Because any member of the council can say, hey, this is a controversial issue. We need to give it another week. I, I propose that we move this to a second reading. And if there are the votes on the council, then we can do that. This is not a ramrod issue. This is just simply reflecting the current practices of the council. And furthermore, I think it gives- And furthermore, I think it gives those who are interested in city government, and that's not necessarily a huge bunch, but everybody in this audience certainly knows, you go read the council packet on Friday. That's what people know to do that are interested in it. And it may provide a little bit more incentive for people to go get themselves informed before the next Thursday's council meeting. So, I don't see that there is any harm that is done. I don't think, I think it actually incentivizes people to be more informed and more, and take more responsibility to get themselves informed. And I think it just simply reflects what the practice currently is. And so, I, I think we need to adopt this as written.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to repeat what I said before, I think the rule is not a response to good governing, and it's a response to poor governing. I think good governing streamlines and moves decisions forward when at all possible. Elimination allows the freedom to govern without the stigma of breaking a law or breaking a rule. About saving time, it only takes a few minutes at this diast, but you have to wait sometimes up to a month to bring it back, depending on how often this council meets. And then, the, like, I echo Councilmember Steinmetz, the council always has the freedom to make as many readings as they wish, not just two, three, four, in order to give the public as many passes as we want to grant. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and comment. I thought the bond approval that we did the past meetings, June first and June eighth, was an example of where the twenty-six A was there, but it was one that we would have all been in favor of, of moving to a second reading because it was pertinent an issue. But a zoning issue and some of the normal things that get applied to twenty-six A aren't. And waiting another week is simply, whether it's three minutes or thirty minutes, it's, 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 it's not an efficient form of government. So, I, I, I support, I, actually, the motion, quite honestly, was that we reinstitute twenty-six A, and, and it was seconded, and I'm not going to, not going to be in for support of that addition. Is there any other comments before I take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to reinstitute twenty-six A into this document, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxger. All opposed, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. That motion fails two-five. With that, we, I believe we were on eight, was it oh-six or oh-seven? That, this one wasn't in the, in the deal, but where, I believe, where, eight oh-six. So, do we have any more commu- or any comments or any changes to eight oh-six? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to eight oh-seven. Is there any comments or recommended changes on eight oh-seven? Seeing none? It's on page one eighty-eight.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay, moving on to eight oh-eight, Order of Business General Procedures. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I'd like to strike eight oh-eight B.
Eight oh-eight B, you said?
Meeting arrangement.
Of the council, council shall occupy the respective seats in the council chambers assigned to them by the mayor?
Correct. It just seems to me like we should be assigned one through seven, and that's it, you know, and, yeah.
Are you making a motion, sir?
I am.
Okay, do I have a second? Seeing none, we'll move on. All right. Moving on, is there any other thing, other items in eight oh-eight, sir? Or anybody? Okay. Moving on to eight oh-nine, Open Public Meetings Act. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I had forwarded this to all members of the council, an amendment that I recommend as actually inserted into B. I felt it fit, worked better instead of C. It's in regard to communication from the diast during a meeting. So, this appeared in our template document from Bothell under OPMA eight point one zero, and I'll read it out loud. Recommend all writings distributed for discussion or consideration at a public meeting are public records. To that end, except for emergencies and technical issues, council members shall not communicate digitally in forms such as, but not limited to, call, text, chat, or social media posting during a council meeting.
Do I, are you making that as a motion?
I am making that as a motion, yes.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Pennington has seconded. Opening up for discussion, I, I will say that if there's possible for a friendly amendment, that would include the presiding officer, and there's at times where I am using my phone device, and only my phone device, for the facilitation of a meeting. Particularly, say, an example would be, I'm having several people contact me that channel twenty-one's not working, or the city feed's not working. Are there something that the chief operations officer, administration officer, or something, is calling out that there's something in order?
Would that constitute a technical issue or emergency?
That would constitute a technical issue. I just want to make sure I'm calling that out. That's the sole purpose I, I use the device for. But I can tell you, in facilitating the meeting, it has been beneficial in that regard. But I'm not texting my mom and asking her how I'm doing when she's watching the meeting or anything like that. Councilmember Harris.
Deputy Mayor, could you read it one more time?
Absolutely. All writings distributed for discussion or consideration at a public meeting are public records. To that end, except for emergencies and technical issues, council members, which includes the mayor's right because he's a council member, shall not communicate digitally in forms such as, but not limited to, call, text, chat, or social media posting during a council meeting.
So, I guess as a point of clarification, communication seems to be outward, and I would agree with that a hundred percent, but to the mayor's comment, there are times when I can't see something, and I want to be able to look at my phone to just be able to read something, or look up like something from the DMMC. And that's inbound, that's research, that's not me communicating with anyone. I, I would agree a hundred percent that nobody here has any business, you know, doing any kind of messaging or whatever. Your focus needs to be on the meeting. But, but just looking up some piece of information seems
Yes.
And I do that, too.
Yeah, Councilmember Harris, we all do that. We're always
Okay, so we're just agreed on, on, on the definition of the word communication?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to have that on, on video.
Any further discussion before I take a vote of that addition to eight oh-nine B? Councilmember Pennington.
Yeah, I, I would just say that, just, you know, keep in mind, anything that, whether it's on your personal device or your city device, that you get communicated through, somebody sending you a question from the public, you know, that, that's all a public record. That's all discoverable. So, as they, from time to time buzz down the diast, remember, one, it's distracting, but two, it's a public record. So, I think it's, it's prudent, you know, at least for me. You don't, you don't communicate to the outside through texting during this meeting. It's, it's not, it's not appropriate, it's distracting. And, you know, if you want to open up your personal device to a public records review, you know, keep doing it, I guess.
Yep. I would, I would add that in the past, we did have a former council member that was posting during the meeting, so, and that was what, what this type of thing would be addressing.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote on the addition? Deputy Mayor Buxton.
So, I just wanted to clarify, just for flow, that I recommended this as eight oh-nine B, and that means eight oh-nine, currently eight oh-nine B, actions would become eight oh-nine C.
Okay.
Okay.
One other clarif- clarification. You, the mayor asked that he be able to, to use his city device to, to communicate with probably the, the, the city clerk, or the chief operations officer, or city manager, if that's appropriate city use of that. Is that included in, in this?
I felt, I think it is, if you're comfortable with this, Mayor, where it says, except for emergencies and technical issues, council members shall not communicate.
Yeah, the only thing is, is, well, I guess that would be good enough. Yes, no, I think that's, I think that's acceptable. I just wanted everybody to understand, if they see me, that's particularly my practice.
Okay.
All right.
City attorney's view?
The way this is written, it would apply to all council members.
Yes.
Well, it, it, yeah, it would, but I think in general, most would abide by it. It would just be for the facility of the meeting. But there could be somebody, one of you guys could be contacted saying, channel one, twenty-one's down, or something like that, and would make, make the council aware, or something along those matters. So, I would say it would apply to us, but that would be like the exception.
As long as it's council business, and, and it's, you know.
And, and obviously, for our public that's watching online, and channel twenty-one and so forth, we want to make sure that they are able to see and hear the meeting for the quality that they all should deserve in that regard, right? Okay, so I think we, I think we're all in agreement that that's what it's used for. So, that would become eight oh-nine B, and eight oh-nine B would become eight oh-nine C, which is listed as actions. Would that, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of that change, raise your right hand, and that change passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to Protocol Administration, Chapter Nine, the Biennial Review. Is there any changes to nine oh-one? So, this is basically, that this City Council Protocol Manual would be something we would have reviewed every two years for adjustments and changes. An example would be when we did the last one, legitimate last one was ten, twelve years ago, and social media was not a prevalent item. So, everybody has an issue, no issue. Moving on to nine oh-two, adherence to protocol. Okay. Moving on to nine oh-three, city attorney as protocol advisor. Councilmember Harris.
I would like to change the wording of this slightly. The city attorney shall assist all council members and serve as an advisor for interpreting the city council's adopted protocol manual. As I said before, this, this is a case where every council member should be able to ask a question of how this works of the city attorney directly.
So, I'd like to, I'd like to defer to the city attorney on that, on that.
Well, council members can request opinions from the city attorney regarding the protocol manual. What this, nine oh-three is related specific to is nine oh-two. In that the mayor is primarily, if you look at nine oh-two B, the mayor will be primarily responsible to ensure that the city council staff and members of the public adhere to the council's adopted protocol manual. Nine oh-three is intended to state that the city attorney will assist the mayor in essentially enforcement, interpretation and enforcement of the manual.
Well, I, yeah, I, I am making a motion to change that shall assist the mayor and all council members, because I think my purpose is clear. Any council member should be able to ask for a ruling on one of these, on opinion, on adherence to the rules from the city attorney. Since you're the ref, council members should be able to ask for a ruling.
So, we, before we go any further, let's get a second on the motion. I have Councilmember Oxger with a second. Okay, sorry, Councilmember Harris, you can continue.
No, I'm, I'm, it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. You, you need to be able to go to the referee to find out, you know, what the, what a particular rule is, so.
Councilmember Steinmetz, discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I'm afraid, Mr. George, your explanation has given me a little confused, because as I see it, nine oh-two and nine oh-three are separate items, and then nine oh-three doesn't reference back to nine oh-two. In the circumstance that you're describing, shouldn't there be a reference back under, in nine oh-three, you know, in interpreting matters under nine oh-two?
Well, this, so, chapter nine is the Protocol Administration.
Right.
So, it's about administering.
Mm-hmm.
And so, nine oh-two is basically the enforcement of the, the protocols and the procedure. And nine oh-three states that the city attorney will assist the mayor. So, certainly, if you, if the council wanted to change that, they could. I will note in Ann McFarland's review, her, she commented specifically on nine oh-three and stated very good exclamation. It's the mayor who makes the final interpretation subject to appeal. So, you know, Ms. McFarland's understanding was the same as mine, that essentially that the city attorney assists in the administration of the protocols, and the mayor, it's the mayor that's responsible for administering them.
Okay, I get it.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Okay, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, so, what about if we added something to nine oh-two A? Each council member shall have the duty and obligation to review this protocol manual and understand to be bound by its provisions, and can, what, and may, and may seek guidance from the city attorney, or what, what does it, so I guess I'm asking, what does a council member do when they don't understand this, if the city attorney is not available as a resource? Or can we say in that sense that, who is the resource for understanding the protocol manual? The mayor, or the city?
Can I just add one more thing? So, in the forward of this document, at the very beginning, it states, issues that are addressed in this publication are often complex and subjective. This manual is intended to be a guide and is not a substitute for the council guidance or opinion of the city attorney. So, I think it's clear from the beginning that if there are questions about the manual specifically, they can be made to me. If there's questions about the administration, as the administrator, my role is to assist the administrator and, or the presiding officer in administering these rules.
All right. Councilmember Harris, do you still want to go forward to the motion?
Yeah, it seems very straightforward to me that, you know, if it, rather than implying something in almost a tertiary way, it, 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 it seems fairly harmless and, and straightforward to just put it in nine point oh-three, and just say that every council member has the right to ask a question regarding the, these rules of the city attorney. It's, it shouldn't be a big thing, in my opinion.
Is there any further discussion before I take a vote on his motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the add in the motion to change the mayor to all council members, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxger. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. Motion fails two-five. All right, moving on to Chapter Ten. Does anyone have any issue with ten oh-one? All right, moving on to issue ten oh-two, filling council vacancies. Okay, moving on. And I'm following along, too. Which goes right to Chapter Eleven, correct? Yep. Parliamentary procedure. Is there any changes to the entry before I go into the chapters? Is there any change to eleven oh-one? Or recommended? Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would like to make an amendment to letter D.
Letter D.
Letter D. So, Letter D. So I would like it to say, "For business council meetings and representation assignments, council members shall adhere to a business casual attire allowing for appropriate cultural expectations." And then, and then eliminate hats because that is by common interpretation of business casual. If you do a cursory Google search, hats are not appropriate. And unless, the only place I found in Google that said hats were appropriate in Google, in business casual attire was a, a hat vendor. So, yes. So I think it's, I think it's redundant to say hats are not allowed.
Okay, so would you make the motion as you want it to be said?
Okay.
And then we'll see if we have a second.
All right. So I move that we amend D to say, I need to move my square here. I'm sorry, my notes are blocking. For council, for business council meetings and representation assignments, council members shall adhere to a business casual attire allowing for appropriate cultural expectations. Period.
Do I have a second? Councilmembers, Steinmetz a second. Discussion before we take a vote. Councilmember Nutting.
Yeah, Mayor, and council. I, I actually have a problem with the, as it reads, Deputy Mayor Buxton's amendment to it. For those that don't know, I'm in construction, and there are many times, even considering this evening, where I missed my council-appointed committee meeting because I've worked far away and had meetings that led right out to getting here in time and in time of manner, and I have, oh, sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. For those that don't know, I'm in construction, and a lot of times I choose whether I'm going to have dinner or change into appropriate dress attire, or forego both of those and come in my construction clothes. Now wearing a pair of Carhartts, work boots, and a ratty T-shirt or a T-shirt that has got mud or paint or drywall mud all over it is not considered business attire unless you are in the construction industry. So I actually have a problem with the dress code unless there is some sort of, some sort of allowance for extenuating circumstances. And that's just my input.
Councilmember Harris.
Well, I think we're still on Deputy Mayor's motion, but if that passed.
We are.
Well, then I will, I have a comment on that, but I think we should process her motion before, before going any further.
Well, all right. Let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion since there's no further discussion. And could you say that one more time? Because it was, it had some complications, but I want to make sure it gets right.
Okay. "For council business meetings and representation assignments, council members shall adhere to a business casual attire allowing for appropriate cultural expectations."
All right.
Period.
All those in favor, are you, so you're gonna have, you have a comment on the motion then? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, so I've also Googled it, and there is a, there's a varying interpretation of what business casual is. Some cases say, hey, jeans are business casual, and others say, no, they're not. So I think, you know, we need to determine which Googled reference you're referring to.
Okay. This, this did not arise just randomly out of the blue. So I'm gonna be as careful as I can, but we had, we have a, had a council member in the past who showed up to a community meeting or a community event and was asked to leave or blocked from coming to the event because they thought that the person was homeless. And, and when it was determined that, no, really, they're a council member, the, the problem with that is the person should either recognize what was going on and change their behavior, or if they didn't recognize that that was a problem, then it does need to be written down. If somebody cannot have an experience like that and recognize well how things need to change, then you do need something in writing. So we're talking about a little bit of an extreme situation, more not just, gosh, I couldn't get here after work. And, and I, I will be direct about this. Councilmember Harris has made kind of a deal about it on social media, mocking this as a, as a petty thing. So I, I actually called him because I thought I don't want to get stuck all of a sudden finding out that there's some, you know, financial thing or medical thing or whatever else is going on. And honestly, it's just, I just want to be comfortable. Okay, well, I would like to be comfortable and wear sweats too. But I advertised to the community in the voter guide and on that back wall that I, this is what I look like. And so when I sell myself to the community based on core values, for whatever reason, we all, almost all of us decided to wear suits for those pictures. And we decide to wear suits for the voter guide, why do we spend the time to do that when we're sitting at a photo shoot? Because inside we have a core value that says, we believe this is important to the community who votes. So when we put out that advertisement, we should come to this dais with looking like what the voters voted for. This is just a business meeting. We, and when we, and that way, I added our representation assignments. If we assign somebody to go out into the community to advocate for us, to, to have a professional, the community wants to know that we have got a professional, powerful, educated, articulate voice, and that we're coming respecting that table. And if we can't trust that our council members are gonna come to a table like that and advocate for whatever it is in our, our, our city that we need, if they're gonna show up in sweats or a dirty hat or, or a hoodie, we can't have them doing. We can't, we have to be able to trust that we are gonna honor this, this dais, our citizens, and the professional business that we're supposed to be elected to do. I think I'm done. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxegar.
So then you just referenced the photos in the back, what we're all wearing. Well, we're not all wearing ties and suits. My, my point was, you cited a Google reference, and I'm telling you that they, that the Google references are not consistent. So are you, is, are you saying that we should be wearing suit and tie? Or if not, which, which Google reference to what constitutes business, casual business attire? What, and I, and I don't think that's, I, I, I would not call that casual business attire.
That's correct. I'm just talking about a core value of respect. Are you here to be comfortable, or are you here to get a message across to either the public or to other business people in the region or the community and have respect for that job? So if it means what, whatever it means, I'm just, there's a problem here, okay? And I don't want to get it down to, you know, what the thread count of your shirt is. There's, there, it's an attitude. And when I, I privately want to deal with the situation and the bottom line is, I just want to be comfortable, that's a problem.
Okay. So if this is, if, if we're talking about a council business meeting, should, should similar requirements go towards staff?
We're just responsible for writing a protocol manual for ourselves, so.
But there are, it's our meeting. Do we have, if we've got a right to require of ourselves, how should we, don't we have a right to require the same?
No, this manual, it only, we only have, the, in this manual, it's just, it's our, it's our document for ourselves. It's a contract between the seven of us of how we want to behave between each other and in the community.
Okay. I'd like to make a few comments. This happens to be an area where I would consider myself quite the expert. I've been in the apparel business for nearly 25 years. And I do have a definition in my mind, of course, like everybody does, of what business casual is. But as Deputy Mayor Buxton was saying, this is about, and each of us has to determine what it is and what the level of business casual, but I guarantee you, you Google business casual, and you're right, you'll see a variation, but there'll be a consistent theme. And what it, what it entiles and what the meaning is, is we show respect for the office. We show, we represent the community, which is important. That, there's an expectation that we represent. And every time possible, we should be reflecting that. The fact is, is that as far as staff and so forth, we are the ones that set the standard. Others will follow. But we don't have the power to dictate that portion of it. So I'm okay with the motion as it stands. Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I think there are two, at least two other points here that need to be made. It's not only about respect for the office and respect for everybody else up here on the dais, that we want to present ourselves in a professional manner. But there isn't a single public entity that I'm aware of that allows you to wear hats in the middle of a meeting. In this room, when court is in session, nobody, including audience members, would be allowed to wear hats. We're not doing that because that's an issue, this is about us up here on the dais. And we're just saying that hats are not appropriate. And obviously, people can go without their hats when they get their picture taken, when they present themselves to voters, you know? And now, there has been some statements made on social media that somebody has a problem, Mr. Harris, has some sort of medical issue. We've created an exception for that. And if he does have a medical issue that requires him to wear a hat, he'll present it to the HR director who will make a determination as to whether that is valid or not. But there is no reason to wear a hat. Mr. Mayor, you're a former military man. I know you understand protocols regarding hats. What happens when you walk inside a building? The hat comes off automatically.
Absolutely no hat.
It's a sign of respect. You don't wear hats inside places. When you go to court, you don't wear hats. If you're in the state legislature, they have a very strict dress code as well. You certainly aren't wearing hats on the floor of the state legislature. I don't know of any other council around that has, that has ever even had somebody attempt to wear a hat on a regular basis during a meeting without, you know, some sort of showing. It just simply doesn't exist, and it's not allowed, and it shouldn't be allowed because it's disrespectful. The casualness with what some people approach this job really is not positive and it's not conducive to a good, well-functioning council and a good, well-functioning presentation to the city. That is why we have this particular dress code in here. It's not targeted at any one individual. I know, he loves to play the victim. That's why he's laughing. That's why you're laughing, because you want to be the victim here. It doesn't matter. If anybody else up here was wearing a hat, it would apply equally to them. This applies to anybody up here on the dais. It's not. The point is, it's just disrespectful, and it needs to change. And we would like you to, we would like all people to adopt a more serious approach to these meetings. Thank you.
Point of order, are we gonna process the Deputy Mayor's motion?
Yes, that's what, so I was gonna, I was bringing it to a vote.
Yeah, we could go to the office and all these.
I'm gonna, I'm bringing it to a vote, sir. Thank you. Unless I have any further discussion on the motion before I take a vote. Seeing none, let's go ahead on Deputy Mayor's Buxton's amendment to change D, 1101D. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, I see Councilmember Steinmetz, I see Deputy Mayor Buxton, and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Nutting, and Councilmember Oxegar. Motion passes 4-3. All right. We're, we're moving down the line. Is there any?
Point of order, I would like to make a motion on the same.
On 1101?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to strike that, I want to strike the whole thing. And I agree with Councilmember Nutting. And, you know, the thing is, I was elected to show up prepared and to have an open mind. And that's basically the deal. This is a question of, this is a month of diversity, and, and tolerance is an expression of diversity. It just occurred to me that...
Wait a minute, I need a second before we go any further. Is there a second? I see Councilmember Oxegar. Okay.
Mayor, I mean, it sounds to me like this is a motion for reconsideration.
And we've already done the business.
No, no, she made an, she made an amendment to the, to the item, but that doesn't mean that we've moved on from item D.
You just voted 4-3 to place this in the rules.
We, we voted 4 to 3. My understanding was an amendment.
Now you're trying to strike the amendment?
Yeah.
That was just passed.
No, I'm mo, I'm moving to strike item D.
Right.
Okay, which is independent of the amendment.
No, it replaced item D. I don't see the validity in it.
I'm sorry, you can, basically, you can make a...
All right, let's take, we'll take a vote real quick, just to satisfy you, sir, because we had the discussion on the same thing. All those in favor of striking item D from 1101, raise your right hand and say aye.
This is really inappropriate to Mayor.
No, exactly, that's exactly my sentiment, sir. All those in favor of striking it.
You know, I mean, I deferred my comment, and I made it very clear that I wanted to address.
Point of order.
I am very quite familiar with this.
I've got the advice from the attorney.
You don't even know what my point of order is.
Give me your point of order.
My point of order is that there should be discussion on the, the motion, and you need to allow discussion.
I'm, I'm deferring to the, sir, sir, you have not been recognized. I'm deferring to the city attorney.
So the coun, the council voted 4-3 to amend D to include specific language. And now essentially you're making a motion to undo what the council just did. So that's a motion for reconsideration. But you have to be on the winning side of the, of the original motion to make that motion.
Therefore, the motion fails, and we move on to 1102.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we're moving on to 1102. Does anyone have an issue with 1102?
I would simply point out that point of orders are always in order, and should always...
Are you making a motion on our discussion of 1102?
No, I just want to point this out. I just want to point this out. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
1102, does anyone have an issue with that? 1103. 1104. Councilmember Harris.
I would like to strike the final sentence of A, where it says, "No member of the council should speak more than twice on the same motion except by consent of the majority of the council present." I would like that to be removed.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Oxegar, second. Discussion. Councilmember Harris, I'll start with you.
It was, that's... It was, that clause or sentence was added in 2011 for a lot, strangely enough, for the same reason as this whole dress code thing. It was, it was targeted at two particular council members at the time. They were mentioned by name. They thought, the thought was that it was slowing up the process of various policies that the majority wanted to move along faster. And, and it, you know, it, it, it has no purpose other than simply to just move things through and, and avoid an actual, real debate. That's it.
Before I call on you, Deputy Mayor Buxton, I want to interject on that. Our job's to be concise, pointed, quickly, efficiently, to move the meeting on. To ramble and struggle and some of the other things that can be inherent in that makes the meeting inefficient. So I do not support your motion. Deputy Mayor Buxton?
And we always do have the option of asking for a vote of the council if we want a third crack at it. And if the, a majority of the council wants to hear a third pass, then we do, you can get that.
Councilmember Harris? Ironically, your second time.
Yeah, well, the two council members mentioned were both at various points, mayor and deputy mayor. And they were two of the most efficient, competent and intelligent council members in this city's history, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion of striking the second sentence of 1104A, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxiger. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. Motion fails two five. Is there anything else in 1104? Okay. 1105. Seeing none. Is there any, anything in chapter 12? It's basically additional resources and training and resource material links to information. Councilmember Harris?
I would just say that if we are referencing the National League of Cities, we should rejoin the National League of Cities. And so I would ask if we could get three votes to move this to, to that discussion to an agenda item sometime soon. Otherwise, it shouldn't be in here.
We, we would do that typically in new business. So you can, you can entertain that thought here. Right now, we're dealing with the business of the manual.
Well, then I would, I would strike that, I would move to strike that until we're actually members. You shouldn't reference.
Do, do we have a second? Seeing none, we will move on. All right. God help us, we went through the first pass. Is there any additional amendments requested? I see, I see Deputy Mayor Buxton first, then I'll go to you, Councilmember Harris.
I had a couple of questions about hearts and minds. We, I think all of us, at least most of us, contribute to that as a matter of course, once we get elected. And if, if that is something that all council members do and it's part of where we put our stipend, I think it should be part of the manual. Or, or guidance for its usage and dispersment.
Do you have a proposed amendment is, is, that you would make a motion on?
I don't, I could have.
So.
Go ahead.
So just the only thing I would say is that I would challenge you to come back at a future meeting with, with a suggested amendment and then we can adopt it into council rules and take it for discussion.
I don't want to do that if it's not required. If hearts and minds is not required, then, then I, it's an optional thing that each one of us do individually and it shouldn't be part of the manual. But if it is required, then it should be part of our manual. So I guess that's my question.
It is not required.
Okay.
Then we need to leave it optional.
Yeah, it is optional. So as far as disposition of the monies and so forth, if we made it required, obviously, then we would add it to the manual.
Okay.
All right?
Then, then.
Then you were, you were saying.
Yeah.
Okay, or, or the attempt to make a motion. Okay, Councilmember Harris, you have a suggested motion? And, and sir, if you could, make the motion and then we'll go into the discussion.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to strike 11.04D. No member of the council may give their allotted time to another member unless there is approval of the majority of the council. I think council members should be able to donate time.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
I'll second first.
Councilmember Oxiger, you have the floor, sir. Go ahead and make your point.
It's fairly self-explanatory. I think that with the, especially with the limitation of speaking twice, if a colleague wishes to donate their time because a colleague has some, something to say about it, they should have that freedom to do so. It's a common practice in many other deliberative bodies and I see no reason to limit it here.
My interjection and comment would be that concise, precise, effective communication shouldn't be a problem. Shouldn't be required. Any other discussion before we take a vote on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of striking, you said 1104D, right? All those in, all those in favor of striking that, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, I see Councilmember Oxiger. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. That motion fails two five. Is there any other suggested amendments or motions for amending this document? Seeing none. I believe we need a motion on the entire document being accepted, is that correct?
Yes, the motion is on the agenda item.
Yeah, it's way up there, right? I don't know what page it, where the, where the motion is, just so we can have somebody make it. All right. That's it, right on the screen. If somebody liked to make the motion, that would be the one you would make. Deputy Mayor Buxton?
I move to pass draft, draft resolution number 23031, adopting the City of Des Moines City Council Protocol Manual as amended. Didn't we need to say as amended?
Yeah, with, that'd be correct, right? As amended by the council.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay? And I have a second by, I have a second, well, I had Councilmember Pennington, but give you, give you a share of a tie there. All right. Any, any discussion on this before I take a vote? Deputy Mayor Buxton?
I did have a closing statement, thank you for your moment here. Almost nothing in this draft originated with us. I want, on, that was on purpose because it lent credibility and reduced the appearance of targeting individuals. We had a desire to create a relevant, readable, reasonable tool for staff, council and the public as a resource to guide and inform. It's a contract for council interaction and behavior. And the vetting of it, before we brought it to this dais, ensures that the concepts and language meet professional and industry standards and expectations. I am proud to present this document to our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
So I will be protesting this vote and here is my statement of protest. June is a month that celebrates tolerance and diversity. I would suggest that we have failed in that regard today. We have once again limited diversity of thought. My colleagues often talk about the city looking as though it was 1962. But after today, you know, they're not just talking about geography, if you dig where I'm coming from. This isn't some country club. We're decision makers, not salespeople. And it just occurred to me, Jack Block, one of the longest-serving Port of Seattle commissioners, like served for two billion years, was a longshoreman and he wore a hat all the time and he was the only guy who voted consistently against the third runway. God bless you, Jack. I believe that how you look and how you express yourself is irrelevant. All that should matter is that you show up prepared and with an open mind. And that is what I have been trying to put forward since my very first meeting. Focus on what we're saying. It may be hard, but just keep at it. Try to listen to the content and not get distracted. That's tolerance. Be willing to change your mind, not try to get others to be more like you. You can do a lot of things to distract people from the emptiness of one's arguments. Not just the outfit, you can make flowery statements, non-sequiturs. I've watched people cry here, okay? I've watched the council for 15 years and we keep moving in a particular direction. And that direction is to tighten the range of opinions that are acceptable. A while back, we limited discussion to only speaking twice. Now we don't want comments which undermine or are somehow viewed as critical. It's just tighter and tighter and tighter. It's not designed to improve government, it's designed to keep things moving in a certain direction. My colleagues spent four meetings on this and now three full-body meetings. We spend so much time on distractions rather than tackling any number of longstanding problems, like the downtown, the airport, the grid, housing. We're years behind on everything. Even this ferry, it's a huge distraction from doing the things that we could and should be focusing on, our core functionality, like communication. I proposed a new website with emergency notifications in my first year. And we ended up with a communication consultant in year four. So now we have a response that's no better than 10 years ago. The public should not want that. To the extent that it does, that no one cares, this is a loss. I'm grieving publicly because the biggest lie ever told in this house, and I've heard it over and over, ah, if it's a problem, we'll just revisit it next year. That does not happen. The new rules are not merely undemocratic and sophomoric. They make the city council poorer in the future because they will lead to poorer decision-making. And I encourage the public to support a truly new city council, one that values diversity of thought and honest debate over some notion of image. It is the shiny wrapper covering something not so nice inside. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger?
We are limited by state law, Open Public Meetings Act, as to how much we can discuss. Discussion, it's requ, discussion is required to go on, on this dais. And yet, for the sake of efficiency, and basically, that's what a lot of this is, is just for efficiency, we're going to limit debate. At the one place where we, as seven members, can talk to each other. I, you know, there, there are some things that, proposals that have been made here that, that may be good, but overall, all we're doing is shutting down the deliberative process and it's, it's just not right. I'll be voting no.
I think there was a lot of work and a lot of thought into this. It follows along with the past council rules and many others that, like cities use. The fact, and I've said it a few times tonight, is we're to communicate efficiently, precisely and effectively. The fact is, is that this manual does that. It also sets some standards that we all adhere to. It, it's, it's important that those be in place so we all understand the rules of engagement in this regard. And I think it does a very good job and I will be fully supporting it. Any other discussion? Councilmember Pennington?
Yeah, I, I know, you know, I don't agree with everything that, that is in the manual, but, you know, I think it's a, it's, it's a good manual. It, it, it does give you the rules of engagement, it gives you a path. It, fortunately, it's a living manual and a document and it can be reviewed and, and changed and, and move on. And, and so we'll see what the future brings. I, when you talk about discussion, I've been a part of councils where, you know, I've been asked to land the plane a few times. And, you know, I get that and, and sometimes it drones on too long, you know, and, and, and then there's always the grandstanding. And then, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things. So you've got to come to, to, to some point where, yeah, this may be really restrictive, but maybe we'll get to something different in the future. That's up to you guys, it's going to be up to me in a few months, but it'll be up to you guys. But, so there's, there's history, there's, there's a lot of different history. But again, you know, with a lot of things, it's, it's time for a reset. Is it perfect? No. But, you know, I appreciate all of the work and all of the comments throughout this process. So thank you to everyone and, you know, we'll take a vote and move forward.
Councilmember Steinmetz, and we have seven minutes and I'd like to get a vote in.
I'll be less than that.
Okay.
I just think that, you know, this is a big rewrite because we haven't done this since 2012. Not everybody's going to be happy with everything. But those who say that somehow this is stifling debate or limiting what people have to say, you know, if you can't make your points in two tries, you're probably not going to be able to make that point. So what's the point of continuing? You know? You could ask the council for more time if that's what you want. It is not stifling debate, you know? It is moving things forward in a good and orderly process. It is addressing a lot of issues that we needed to address because times have changed since 2012. Social media came up. And these are good rules. We borrowed heavily from other cities. We sought out a consultant that everybody on this dais seems to have some respect for. Jurassic Parliament is the name of her, her consulting group. And, you know, she said, "These are good rules." You know? The idea that the sky is falling is just wrong, but hysteria is, you know, what sells apparently. Hysteria and victimology. And we're not picking on anybody and the rules all apply to everybody equally up here. It's just a question of, are we going to try to run nice, straightforward, orderly meetings that can, you know, make sure that the public understands what's going on and keeps things from running on and on and on? So I'm going to be voting in support of these. I think a lot of hard work went into that and I appreciate my colleagues' efforts.
All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to move the past draft resolution number 23031, adopting the City of Des Moines City Council Protocol Manual, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Oxiger. The motion passes five two. All right. The next meeting date will be July 13, 2023, for a regular meeting of the city council. At this time, we will go into executive session, discuss labor negotiations under RCW, or I'm sorry, review of an employee, and I probably have the wrong RCW. Could you put it up? I copy and pasted the incorrect one. My bad, I apologize to the public. The, yeah, performance of a public employee, RCW 42.30.110, subparagraph one, subparagraph G. The executive session is expected to last 40 minutes. You are more than welcome to stay, however, council. You are more than welcome to stay, however, council will be adjourning the meeting immediately after the conclusion of the executive session, and no formal action will be taken. Oh, before I do that, well, I think, yeah, we did, we agreed, we didn't do the motion, though, probably, right? That we extended, that we would extend for-
Are we stopped this?
Yeah, that we, I thought we made, we'd agreed that would be 9:30, and we'd done that.
I guess if you could just do that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to take the meeting to no later than 9:30 for the executive session?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? Got a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, did you raise your hand, sir? Okay, Councilmember Stein, it was unanimous, seven-zero, how about that? All right. Then, there we go. You guys have a great day and a happy Fourth of July, be safe.